County Council meeting's now in session. The Honorable Bump Radio give the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you once again just to say thank you. Thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us as we enter this holiday season. We ask that you place upon our hearts to remember those who are less fortunate and that we keep them in mind as well. But we ask that you continue to bless our troops and protect them from all hurt, harm, and danger. Lord bless this council and give us the wisdom and guidance to lead this county. In these names we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is oath of office. When I call your name, would you come forward to be in front of Mr. Kendry here, our county Ruth Knup. Thank you, sir. Tom Templeton, Scott Patterson, and P. N. Saxena, I think that's how you pronounce it.
Yes.
Did I do good?
Yes.
Finally got one right. Okay.
What about that little one?
I do solemnly swear. That I'm duly qualified. According to the Constitution of this state. To exercise the duties of the office. To which I have been appointed. And I will to the best of my ability. Discharge the duties thereof. And preserve, protect, and defend. And preserve, protect, and defend. The Constitution of this state. And of the United States. So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for doing this. Appreciate it. I appreciate it. We appreciate you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Tom?
Appreciate it. Appreciate all you serve.
Thank you.
Most people.
And I want to welcome all citizens and those watching on the Internet or watching our tape delay. You know, it shows your interest in holding us accountable. It's probably the only true way to know the facts with the way the media is this day in time. But that being said, like they've ever been, under appearances, first person is Tracy, Tracy Muskele, to address the council regarding the importance of agricultural or agriculture in York County.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for having us tonight. As Mr. Blackwell said, my name is Tracy Muskele. I didn't grow up on a farm. I married into one. I actually grew up here as a city girl in York. My dad was the police chief. My mom was in banking. But I married a beef cattle family operation with my husband Jesse. He taught agriculture education, and we became involved in Farm Bureau to speak on behalf of farmers that aren't able to. The other two ladies, I'll introduce themselves that are with me.
Hey, I'm Laura Beth Smith. I didn't grow up here. I grew up in Berkeley County on a horse farm and moved up here after I graduated from Clemson. I majored in ag economics, worked for Farm Credit for three years, and now I work for the Bank of York as a commercial lender. And I just see the importance of agriculture in this community and in this county from an investment banking standpoint, as well as it's just something that I'm passionate about.
Good afternoon. My name is Cameron Ramsey. My husband is with me. His name is Guy Ramsey. I teach agriculture education at York Middle School, and my husband, along with farming, a small beef cattle operation, is also a contractor, a commercial contractor here in the county. We, I came from 1,100 acres of row crops in Lexington County, so my ag background is a little bit different than what you see up here, but I am easily and slowly learning kind of a little bit about ag here in York County. And like Tracy said, we kind of just want to talk to you a little bit about what our mission is as far as young farmers with Farm Bureau and some of the things that we look out for. I'll let Tracy take back over.
We thought this was a great opportunity to speak this week because of the focal point of food with our upcoming holiday. So you'll notice if you ate today, thank a farmer. The next slide we have is a video. It's very short. This is the Farm, American Farm Bureau President Zippy Duval.
So I'm Zippy Duval, and I'm a third-generation dairy farmer, this now a beef farmer. I'm sitting here on my grandfather's old barn that he built in 1939. I grew up here. I grew up here and thought I'd be a lawyer at one time, but I would always wear the road out from college getting back here to be with the cows because that's where I was most comfortable and enjoyed doing it. Coming back home to the farm and being able to spend time with these beautiful creatures, it is a sense of grounding yourself, and it's a sense of accomplishment. Ain't nobody gonna hurt you. I'm very passionate about what I do. You got a good mama. I'm passionate about agriculture and farmers and their families and their communities. We carry this tremendous burden on our shoulders. I'll give y'all some. We're the ones that are out there making sure that food and fiber and clothing is produced in a healthy way and that there's enough of it for everybody to go around. Yeah, my dad got me involved in Farm Bureau by encouraging me to get outside my fence rows and get involved in policymaking. What's important, because agriculture is one of the main drivers outside of our urban areas, a lot of the issues we face are very difficult. We're very concerned where agriculture is right now, but the biggest thing is that they're overregulated. So we're sitting here on about 650, 700 acres of land. I think about all the things that we do as farmers to take care of this land and the animals, and it kind of motivates me to get back out and tell the story. No time in history have we ever needed a united voice in agriculture. We're looking for opportunities in landscape to take our organization and tell the farmer's story to make a difference in that policy that's going to shape his life back on the farm. And that's what our job is. Our mission is to be their voice. In the absence of having Farm Bureau, there would be no voice.
Apologize for the delay in the video and the sound, but...
I figured he'd just talk slow.
Well, he is a Georgia boy. Something really stuck out to me, and that was that President Duval said that, you know, farmers are burdened with producing food and fiber and clothing for everyone. As you can see, the average age of the American farmer is 59 and a half. This is not a dying industry. This is an aging industry. We need to support farmers so that we can eat, enjoy that Thanksgiving meal, that we can wear these nice clothes. And something that is a misconception for a lot of Americans is that, you know, these farms are huge corporations. Ninety-nine percent of families, of farms are family-owned and are small businesses, and they're not out making huge profit margins, but they are contributing to their communities. Agriculture is the number-one industry in our state per Clemson University, and that is like 89 sectors of business, but it is a huge diverse industry. It accounts for $42 billion in our South Carolina economy and about 212,000 jobs. So it is important that we are out here as farmers and on behalf of farmers to tell the story so that people understand the importance of agriculture.
Something that, just off the cuff, today I, like I said, I teach. So something that I asked my students on the eve of them getting out for Thanksgiving, which they're overly happy for, I asked them what they're thankful for as far as their warm-up in class goes. I said, "Give me three things that you're thankful for." And most of them came back with the three F's: family, friends, food, which we are all pretty thankful for, I think. And the big thing that I was able to take away from that is us as agriculturalists, we're providing them something, we're growing something, we're making something that means a lot more than just any old business to them. We're making something that's a staple, not only in their households, we're making something they have to have to live, whether that is their food, or their clothing, or their homes. And to go along with that, these stats that you see up here at the top of your screen, yes, that number at the top, and that's, what is that, 96,838,000? That is the total market value of products sold. That was according to the 2012 United States Census. That number at your bottom, 123,000, almost 124,000 acres, that's farmland that we have here in York County alone. If you do the math, that works out to be about 28% of our overall land here in York County. But to go along with that, that's distributed amongst 1,000 farms roughly, but that's, that's used to feed the entire population. So take that 28%, that feeds 100%. Along with that, 9 billion is what our population is expected to be by the year 2050. So take our population that we currently have, add another fourth, and that's what we're going to have. That's the task that we have at hand.
Like I said earlier, I love agriculture. I'm very passionate about it. It goes hand-in-hand with what I do as a career with investment banking and the economic impact that ag has in York County. Just a few more stats. Like Tracy said, the average age of the farmer in the United States is 59 and a half. It's estimated that by 2025, 70% of farmland is going to change hands. Why do I care about that? That's going to provide a lot of dollar turnover, not only in this county, but nationwide. It's going to give us opportunity for new land purchases, new land acquisition, and that's just going to trickle down from investment banking to realtors to those businesses in the county that provide a service to farmers. Another thing that worries me as an investment banker is the fact that ag is constantly being overregulated, overtaxed, things like that. It's providing an out for people, this younger generation that want to get into ag, they're not wanting to invest in long-term real estate. What they're wanting to do instead is lease land. That kind of scares me as a banker because there goes a 20-year mortgage or a 30-year mortgage right out the door because people my age are wanting to lease, and that means that they can just walk away if it doesn't work out. So that's another reason why it's important to kind of keep it at the forefront and watch the overregulation, overtaxation of our farms in the county.
Again, our whole purpose tonight was just to educate on behalf of our Farm Bureau organization, but also on our passions. You know, all of us are involved in agriculture. My husband grew up showing dairy cattle. I hope one day that my three-year-old will join the York County Dairy Club, which is very prominent and bigger than it has been in years, and that that will be an avenue for her to earn scholarships and potentially involve herself in a career in agriculture because it teaches such great values, and that's what we're all so passionate about, is taking care of other people, not only animals that are on the farm, but also, you know, farming is a calling, just like, you know, my dad was a police officer, that's a calling. Cameron and I are teachers, that's a calling. Laura Best in banking is a calling. Farming is a calling, and we just want to make sure that it can continue in York County and that it's supported in York County. So, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, ladies. Great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Let's see, now we have an update on the Pennies for Progress? Yes, sir?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's been a busy 13 days since the referendum was approved. It was approved at 78%, so we were pleased with that. Two weeks ago, on the first meeting in November, y'all approved a list of consultants for us to work with on Pennies Four. You also approved a $16 million loan. So once the referendum was approved on Tuesday, Wednesday morning, I was on the phone all day calling consultants, assigning projects. We've already had, we had four kickoff meetings last week. We had two today. We have two tomorrow, and the final three are next week with all the consultants. One of the projects DOT is actually going to design for us, so that saves us about 100 grand on that project. So we've been very busy with these meetings, excuse me, going over all, going over each individual project with that consultant, going over scope. They'll put the scope together, hope to bring all that back to you in February timeframe to get under contract with those consultants. Also, what's been going on, as part of the $16 million loan you approved, $11 million of dollars of that is going to go to DOT. Later tonight, hopefully you'll approve a resurfacing IGA with the DOT. That basically allows us to send them the roads. They will bid it, they will manage it, they will inspect it, and then they'll send us any money back at the end. So with that said, I talked with DOT earlier today. We have two bids that they have prepared, one on the eastern side of the county, one on the western side of the county, about $11 million total. One bid will go out and be opened, will be let in February, and one bid will be let in March. So both of those projects will be under contract, and will be under contract with 11 of the other projects all before May 1st. That's important because the tax does not begin collecting until May 1st. So we are way ahead of the game of where we've been in the past. So that's thankful to y'all to approving the loan and the listing consultants ahead of time. One thing that we have been working on, Karen, if you want to pass those down, we've been, my staff, Ruth Doyle, a new CPA that the Engineering Department hired, working with myself and Kevin, she did a tremendous job on these. We've put together some, a report that we plan to put on the county website for each program, kind of highlights the overall individual program, and then it digs in deeper on each individual project as well. So we've been working on these last couple of weeks. We've had citizen input on it as well, and the plan is to put this on the website next week. Like I said, Kevin, we've worked closely with him on this, on this project, and are pleased with it, and plan to put it on the website next week for the public to be able to have access to. We'll update it every quarter, whenever we come to you, or whenever I come to you each quarter to do an update. This will be updated each quarter, and we'll update it on the website as well. That's kind of all I had tonight. If you have any project-specific questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but this is just kind of a general overview of where we are on Pennies Four moving forward. This report, again, is leading to being more transparent with the council, with the public, so it will be on the website.
Yeah, this was put in the wrong location, so I'll allow questions if you have any. Yeah. I think I saw Bump.
How's the McCollum's project coming along? Where we at on that one?
It's under construction. It was delayed early on due to utilities. It'll most likely be probably spring of 19 before it's completely open to traffic, but things are progressing out there.
Mr. Johnson?
One, thank you. I'll look at it and go through it in a little more detail, but I did a quick review of it. One of the things I'd love to see you add to this is some of these timelines, the fact that you'll bid out in February, you'll bid out in March, you'll be under contract by May 1, so that we can judge this not only by dollars spent, but are we meeting our own internal timelines?
Sure.
And if we can keep track of that, I think one of the biggest knocks on Pennies, you know, other than the cost of runs is how long it takes. Being able to show people, this is, this is what we think, and this is, these are the timelines, and if we didn't meet that timeline, why? And if we beat it, that's even better.
Sure. So in preparing for the cash flow, we developed a schedule for each individual project at staff level. We're also asking each consultant to develop their own schedule without CNRs, then we'll compare theirs to what we came up with to come to a consensus, a consensus on what we both think is a reasonable timeline.
Okay.
And then you're going to put it on the website?
Put it on the website, yes.
Anybody else? Nope. And, you know, with, and of course with roads, it's really hard to be on time and under budget, but as close as you can make it.
Absolutely. That's why we've, we're six or nine months ahead of where we were on Pennies Three with getting under contract and the resurfacing going out as quick as we can.
Yeah, and Pennies Three was a big improvement, but hopefully with your guidance, we can really set another model for the state.
Well, we at a staff level have high expectations of doing that. Yes, sir?
I do want, want to thank you, and I think it's great that, from my understanding, when I looked at the numbers, all but two precincts in the entire county voted to approve this, and those were very slim margins. So, I mean, I think it speaks volumes to what the people want. One of the things that I had hoped that we'd do when we do this quarterly report, since we got rid of and decommissioned the Pennies Committee, was to have a form that we would do quarterly that the council could look at and identify any problems with any budgeting issues, timeline issues. And I haven't had a chance to look at this at length, but is there, is there a particular form or format that we're going to adopt going forward to make sure that we don't have any problems that were in the past where council wasn't aware of something becoming a problem that threw it out of budget or out of timeline? Is that form developed?
So in that packet, it shows specifically on Pennies Four projects moving forward because those were starting with a clean slate and a good baseline budget. So each chart in there has the original referendum-approved budget and then a revised budget, if it's updated, and then a total amount spent to date. So it'll track that for design, for right-of-way, and for construction, and for the overall project. So it's shown on there, each project has that chart. And then, once we add the schedule to it, that should be, be able to be updated quarterly as well.
So when it comes to council, though, we're going to have, we're going to know every quarter if there's a project behind in the budget.
And if, if...
If there's a project that's...
If it ever comes to where the revised budget is greater than the referendum budget, there will be an explanation at the bottom of that chart telling why, you know? Maybe those are...
But council will approve the revised budget, and we'll identify it on these charts if there is to be a revised budget.
It'll be identified on there, yes.
And council will approve that.
Well, I'm not sure how that would work because a lot of times, we may, the revised budget may be greater, but it hasn't gone to construction yet, so there's nothing really to approve money-wise, if that makes sense. So we're basically saying, at this point, we think it's going to be higher than the referendum amount, but we haven't gone to bid yet, so there's nothing, there's nothing to approve financially, if that makes sense.
What I'm trying to avoid is us getting to the end of the road, and then, then the council had no input to help ensure that the project, if it's going to be double the budget, that we are at construction phase at that point.
Right, and you'll see that as soon as we know it, in the revised budget in your packet.
Where would we, I guess, I think Ms. Cox's question is, where would we say no? Where would we say, no, we're not willing to go over budget there? I mean, at what stage would we say that? I think that's the question, not, you know, how will you report it? I get how you're going to report it, but where would, would it be when you come in with a bid, and it's over, and we go, no? I mean, is that basically our step in? I guess the question is, when do we have that, hey, wire?
I guess that would probably need to be a case-by-case basis on what we bring to you and tell you why it's over, but because sometimes we may not have a choice. Maybe it's something that has to be done with the project. We did a boring and realized there's an old gas tank out there that has to be remediated. Well, that has to be done to build the project. So it'd probably be a case-by-case basis on what we, I guess, y'all would have input on what we could or could not do. Like, if the scope increases, maybe we would have an argument with DOT or a municipality that says, well, this wasn't really the intention from the beginning, and it's not needed for the project, it's an extra or luxury. That would be an opportunity where we could say, no, we're not planning to do that.
All right, that makes some sense if there, obviously you find something we didn't know was there. We got, we got to build the road. We're obligated to build the road. We're going to build the road. But if, if there is project creep, which we saw a lot in some of the previous pennies, or if there are utilities who are not cooperating, those are things that are going to come back.
Right.
I guess that's what we're trying to make sure, those are going to come back before us so that we can then say no.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
I know you're not Santa Claus, but is there any way that we could have an update on pole branch, maybe a little something started before Christmas?
Our intent is to advertise for bid in December. Without any unforeseen circumstances, that's the timeline we're on right now.
How long, how long does that?
Now, due to the size of that project and to the holidays, and we have to have a pre-bid meeting because it's, there's three bridges on it, so the intent would be to open bids the first week in February, come to council the first meeting in March to award it, have a pre-con, sign contracts, and March, maybe April, actually start construction.
So we're a year from when I was told the same thing last year. SC DOT said that they were going to begin some work in November or December. So is there any way to find out from them?
I know they've done some shoulder work out there.
They dumped a little gravel on the side of the road.
Yeah. I don't know if they were planning to do anything more than that.
Yeah. That was their safety. That was their safety.
Yes, ma'am.
So how, so, you know, the timeline that I'm looking for is the timeline that shows, shows me, it's frustrating because I say to everybody, they're going to start in April, and then they don't start in April, so then people start calling me again, and then, then they're going to start in November or December, and they don't start. And then now we're looking at a bidding for February, and I don't know, you know, how long each one of those steps take.
Right, so once we go to bid, then our schedule is pretty set. It's getting all the approvals, getting all the permits. We think we're going to get approval next month, but oh, they come back with three other comments that we have to address, so that, but, so once we get all that approval and are advertised for bid, your schedule is, is pretty set. And we are anticipating advertising for bid in December, which would put the bid opening in February. Then even once you bid it, you still have to come to council to award it, sign contracts, have a pre-construction meeting. There's still another 30 to 45 days after you award it before construction can actually start.
So we really should not look for anything to, to happen or look different probably until April?
April at the earliest.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Next order of business is public forum, but the two people that signed up for both rezoning issues, Carmen Hamilton and George Ward, they're both under public hearings, so that way you're not restricted, and it should be coming up pretty soon. And you can talk a lot longer than two minutes, so I'm going to hold off until we get to it and then let you come forward, if that's okay with the two of you. We're, y'all good?
It's about 30 seconds. If I could just...
You'd rather do it now?
Just to do it now.
Okay. Yeah, just be sure to give your name and address.
Yes. George Ward, Coldwell Banker Commercial, 27 South, South Congress. I represent Jones Harris. Had a discussion earlier today, and it's just a point of clarification that staff agrees with. They concur, and they're going to amend it before the third reading. This should read 17 acres, not 27.
Which, what are you talking about?
1725.
What is that? Number one, first public hearing.
All right. All right. Sorry, go ahead.
So it just, it should read 17 acres, not 27. Staff's aware it was an oversight. They concur, and they'll be amending it before the third reading.
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
That was painless. Carmen, did you want to, you'll wait? Okay, next order of business, consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Discussion.
I have one.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Cox?
I would request, just following my previous comments, there are two FLO agreements that are on this. I would like those on, not on consent agenda for third reading to the extent.
These, these are both second readings?
I think they're second or first. I just want to make sure they come before council for discussion.
You got that?
And I do understand that we're going to have, we're going to start having some input, I think, at the beginning of the year. I think Bill said it was at the beginning of 2018. We'll start having some details about the FLOs and analysis on that. Is that right?
Bill?
Okay. Thanks.
Anybody else? Question on the motion. All of the papers say aye. Oppose, no. Next order of business, public hearings. Hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number 1725, rezoned from UD to RD1 at, geez, trying to read through all this. Help? Andy?
Sir.
Which one does this apply to? I mean, both tax map numbers?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, and then rezoned from UD to RUD at Alzerner Love Highway and Gabby Ford Road. Anybody here want to speak against? Against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Y'all want to speak? This is not y'all? Oh, that's right, it was, sorry about that. All right. Discussion, all of the papers say aye. Oppose, no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve second.
Discussion. All of the papers say aye. Oppose, no. Next... Oppose, no, next item. Hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number 1726, UD rezoning project in Mr. Williams' district. Anybody here want to speak against? Against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, new motion.
Move to approve, second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item. Hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number 1729, rezoned from BD3 to RC2 at 4195 Buess Drive in the Rock Hill Community. Anybody here want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close, second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Next item, hold public hearing, consider second reading, case number 1730, rezoned RD2 to BD1 at 1970 Hair Road in the Fort Mill Community. Anybody want to speak against? Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Powers. I'm a property owner near one of the adjacent parcels. Really, just kind of a question of clarification on the traffic impact, came in at less than 2%, but I'm questioning as to why the access road would be coming off of Hair Road versus the bypass.
That lady in the red dress over there, she'll be the one to ask. We don't have any back-and-forth discussion in the public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, I'm against it until I get clarification on that.
Okay. Yes, sir, you go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Access onto roadways is typically determined by the SCDOT. In a situation like this, where you're on the parkway, newly constructed roadway, and a, another alternative roadway, whether it be collector arterial, they're going to go with the other access just to avoid curb cuts on the, on this new principal arterial that was constructed. So that's why it'd be coming off Hair Road instead of coming off the bypass.
Not only engineered it, it's near the intersection.
The idea is to reduce the number of curb cuts that might appear, which slows down traffic and creates safety issues, so that's why it's there.
Thanks, Steve.
You bet.
Did y'all want to comment now? Yes, sir. Just be sure to name and address.
So the issue that I see with that is the existing Hair Road is right through residential neighborhood, so the impact on children, one of which is my niece, my son plays over there a little bit too. You know, I understand the issue of the curb cut, but if you have an increase in cut-through traffic, I don't know if you're familiar with that area, but it is a cut-through to the bypass, and I understand it's developmental, but we have a residential neighborhood that's immediately impacted, curb cut or no curb cut. There's children playing in the area, so why it wouldn't be off of the bypass where there are no children already playing, I think that would be a better alternative.
Can you give your address if you didn't get it?
17, it's 1788 W's Bridge Road, and then the parcel that I actually own is behind it, there is no residence there, but it's adjacent to a residential that's owned.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Mike Coldbank, 530 Jostland Point Lane. I'm the proud father of one of the owners of Therapy Works for Kids, and the development arm of that is Spring Haven Development. It's a corporation that was started five years ago. It provides speech, occupational, and physical therapy to children of the area, a much-needed service. It's grown to 12 employees, so we need a new place to be, to, new place. This is, this is a perfect location to serve the growing needs of Fort Mill and the population there, in a much-needed service for the children there. We've complied, you know, we've done the traffic survey, all of those things, and based on the recommendations from the planning department, that's where they recommended the road to be. And, so, I'd appreciate the approval for this much, for a win-win for York County, the children of York County, and Therapy Works. Thank you. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer there.
Yeah, we don't ask questions.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else in favor, want to speak in favor? Have a motion to close?
Move to close, second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no, do I have a new motion?
Move to approve, second reading.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Cox.
I am concerned, this is the first concern that's been raised to me. I see that it went before Planning Commission, and it was unanimous approval. At this point, there still is a third reading before this would be approved, but I will walk around and give you one of my cards. I definitely want to make sure that we connect, and I'll do some more due diligence before we get to third reading to see if there's something else that needs to be done on that.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item, consider second reading, case number 1733, rezoned property from AGC to RUD at 228 Cameron Road.
It's not a public hearing, so you can go ahead.
Yeah, we need a motion.
We're holding a public hearing?
No, 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 this second, we're under old business.
Oh, sorry. I have one there. I move to approve, second reading. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item. Consider, council, consider a third reading of an ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, South Carolina, Chapter 155, entitled Zoning Code, Sections 155.009, Definitions 155.428, Lot Development Requirements, Subsections A, Minimum Lot Setbacks, B3, RC1, RC2, Minimum Lot Requirements, B4, RD1, RD2, Minimum Lot Requirements, and B9, UD Minimum Lot Requirements. In order to revise the definition of patio home, revise the minimum lot size setbacks for single-family residential, residential accessory buildings and residential accessory uses, increase the minimum lot size for RC1, RC2, RD1, and RD2 zoning district to remove minimum lot size requirements for the UD zoning district, to remove the permissive 30% lot size reduction for single-family residential developments, to provide for a reduction in minimum lot size for small lot subdivisions, to add a minimum setback requirement for retention walls higher than four feet, to remove CB from residential accessory uses, to invoke the pending ordinance doctrine, to hold a public hearing, and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion.
I think it's a baby step.
Yes, Ms. Cox.
This is a baby step. I'm glad that council's moving forward with this. I think our public workshop was a step in the right direction. I think we need to do more, but I'm excited that the council's moving forward on this. And I hope that when we come back from workshops, that what the council has agreed on will be what's on the table, and that we discuss recommendations after that.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item. That was two, wasn't it? Was that number two?
Yep.
Okay. Consider, council to consider a third reading of ordinance to amend the code of the county of York, South Carolina, Chapter 154, entitled Subdivision Code, Sections 154.029, Preliminary Platte Reviews, Subsections E and F, in order to allow the Planning Commission to approve residential subdivisions with reduced lot sizes that meet certain criteria, to provide additional criteria for the Planning Commission to approve patio home subdivisions, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other minors related thereto.
Motion to approve, second.
And the, obviously, I don't have, Michael, I don't have to read in the...
I believe they were amended into the ordinance.
Okay, so I don't have to read?
No, sir.
Okay. Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item. Council to consider adopting a resolution of the York County Council declaring the results of the referendum held on November 7, 2017, on the imposition or reimposition of a 1% sales and use tax pursuant to the Capital Project Sales Tax Act.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item, request to consider provider to review employee health and benefits at a cost of $55,000.
Move to approve for discussion.
Need a second. Discussion, Mr. Winkler.
I have a question. We discussed some things in Finance and Operations earlier today of some changes in budgets and things come along. Is this money something that was budgeted, or is this a general fund expense that was not budgeted?
Mr. Williams.
I got some concerns about this. I don't know if it's, it needs to be done now, I mean, if timing of an essence, I don't know, I'm prepared to vote for it now. When we did, we did the same thing a couple of years ago with Workers' Comp, and I think it, it was a positive, positive thing, but it was more deliberate, and there was an awful lot of stuff that we did up front. It didn't cost $55,000, and I just think with our, with the health of our, our group and that there's just basically one provider in South Carolina, there would be some other cheaper options to explore first, which is why I'm having a hard time supporting it.
I don't see any other hand, so I, I will not support this. One, it's highly restricted on the options we have. It's a government health plan. There's not like we have a lot of options, number one. Number two, Obamacare may default in the next year, whether you, you know, what side you take, it doesn't matter, it's just plowing itself under. I think the premium's raised 35% in the past year, just in South Carolina, some states over 100%, or 100%, well, actually, over 100% premium increases. I mean, we're dealing with the state. I can't offer to take, I mean, we have a very healthy general fund, and I get it, but I can't take money out of that general fund for something that we ought to have state department in that area, people that should consult with us that will help guide us. I understand part of it's the benefit thing. If we were an independent, non-state government agency, just an independent group or whatever, it makes a lot of sense because you have to fight the monster. I fight this monster every day in my practice. And the, like Mr. Williams pointed out too, the price of it to me seemed pretty astronomical because you don't really have many options to begin with. I mean, it's extremely restricted, plus the fact, I think the state should have people, I believe they do have people, that can provide some guidance on this without us paying another insurance-related company to do what the state, there's people in the, at the state level that can provide guidance and assistance because we have such a limited spectrum, so I can't support it. Mr. Roddy.
My question was, were we, you know, by doing this, were we looking to go outside of what's basically offered now?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Go outside of state government?
Outside of Blue Cross Blue Shield, pretty much.
Then would a, and then, maybe I'm just off base, would not a request, put an RFQ, RP, and say, and say, insurance providers, send us.
Show us what you got.
Send us your numbers. Tell, I mean, there got to be, I get phone call, cold call, once, twice a month, five people wanting to, me to switch my firm's health insurance, or I'm trying to, I, I mean, is there, seems that we're paying somebody to go out and shop for better rates for us. Is, I mean, is, is that not, could it be done internally, I guess, is what we're?
Part of this initiative is to, yes, sir, just to shop, to see if there's something better. You know, we're part of the state pool, and we're subject to the pool's claims statewide, that's state employees, school districts, local governments, et cetera. Your large providers, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, your Adminster United, they're, they're the providers. These are, these folks are going to come in and do an actuarial study on, you know, what is our claim history? Does it make sense to stay on the plan? Does it make sense to go off? If you go off, what are your options out there? Is there a way to better control your claims? Is there a way to offer better health insurance to your employees? And you're not subject to the fluctuations of the state plan. Over the last two years, I know the county's paid over 4% increase on the employer's side in healthcare benefits. We have no way of controlling that.
Did you say 4%?
4% over the last two years.
We're on a lot of business.
Some of those jumps have been higher, some years they've been flat. The intent behind this was to do precisely that, to shop that, perhaps getting off the state plan is wise, perhaps it is not, but we know what we've got, and we're subject to increases that we have no control over.
Well, knowing the state, and I don't want to interrupt you, but knowing this, since I deal with these people every day, I mean, if you get off of it, can you even get back on it?
Four years, there's a four-year penalty, so to speak.
Yeah, so I figured it, that's, and that's just because we're government, government agency. If we were not, it would be a lot worse than that, and the premium would be astronomical when you got back in. Mr. Williams.
Well, in fairness to what they're trying to do, that would be one of the things that they're, they're looking at, to try to determine, but I think, I just think there's, I agree with, with that direction, I just think, I'm not convinced we got to spend $55,000 to do it. And I think there's other ways to pursue, to figure it out, like Mr. Johnson said about just, hey, just put it up in RFQ and see what happens, but it did work for Workers' Comp, and that's what, that's what my comments were about. I do think, you know, it, it's a possibility that it could, that it could work out, but I, I mean, I think that, that we can explore cheaper options to know we're heading in the right direction before we, before we take this step.
Mr. Winkler.
And now that I have my questions answered, I personally would feel better, instead of coming up in the middle of the budget year and us throwing another $55,000 out for something, did this be budgeted next budget season for this if we think that's what is needed? So I am withdrawing my motion to approve this.
So do we have a, do I ask the second if they agree?
I agree.
Okay, now what, Mr. County Attorney?
Can move to deny.
Okay, so do we have a motion to deny then?
I'll move to deny. Second.
Discussion, question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item, council to consider funding new position or project manager position for planning and development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Staff, keep, we keep telling staff, tell us what you need, and we'll give it to you.
Absolutely. Do you want to say anything, Bill, or you good?
Well, I was just, just so you know, the intent behind this is hire a actual PE that'll oversee utility plan review and environmental compliance. Things are getting more and more sophisticated, requires a higher level of technical expertise. I have confidence in our existing staff, but there's just limits to their education and experience, so to put the county on a, you know, on a level playing field, a lot of these engineering firms are submitting stuff on behalf of developers, et cetera, I'd like to have a better opportunity to review submissions.
Mr. Williams.
And this, this, this does directly support one of our strategic goals.
Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, no, next item is committee reports, the Honorable Michael Johnson for Finance and Operations.
Finance and operation met today at 5:00. We considered applications for service for the York County Economic Development Board and appointed, or reappointed, no, I'm sorry, appointed Jeff Allen for the office designation. York County Planning Commission, we approved Jennifer Bowman for at-large, and Walt Heinsohn for District 7. On the Board of Assessment Appeals, we approved Valerie Lynch for District 2, and Gray Fitzgerald. And I just wrote district.
Greg Fitzgerald, District 7.
And that's terrible handwriting, then. Greg Fitzgerald for District 7. We also reviewed the York County Planning Commission. We asked that that be deferred for additional information. We then had a fairly lengthy discussion kind of about, what is the proper balance on the Planning Commission? What should the Planning Commissioner look like? Should it have experts? Should it have citizens? How should that makeup look like? In a way, I'm not saying the council has totally ceded it over to the finance, because certainly you have a vote in next week, but in a way, the Finance Committee is shaping every committee here, and we would like to have some discussions at a council level at some point, whether it's a workshop or just a discussion item for an agenda, in which we could talk about, what, what should this makeup look like? I mean, what is a balance, what's that balance look like to everybody? What, you know, I think our consensus was, we, we have too many people on each extreme right now. We have too many people who approve everything that comes along, we have too many people that approve, that say no to everything that comes along. And what we need is some people to actually sit down and analyze what's before them and try to make decisions that are the best for York County. And right now, we feel that we're almost polarized, and if we continue to just put these polarizing groups in, we're not going to get good results.
What did you say was deferred?
The deferred, the annual review of the York County Planning Commission. We also then discussed finance, and Mr. Winkler somewhat brought this up a second ago. We are over budget on... We are over budget on recycling due to TV and electronics. The cost to recycle those items has gone up dramatically, and the county is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, as I recall, in the negative on that year-to-date. We have a overage in the payroll for the animal shelter. We've lost our veterinarian, so they're now having to sub out all of that work. And this council approved about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars two weeks ago to hire a consultants, to rewrite ordinances, and that was not in the budget. The point of that is, we are dipping into the general fund to, to run, basically, day-to-day operations in some of these areas. And that is something that we, we're going to hear a report in two weeks on how to get a better handle on the recycling aspect of it, but it's certainly something that we need to keep in mind every time we, whether it's fifty-five thousand dollars or two hundred, or two million dollars, is that how we're impacting our, our budgets. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Then there's the council member new non-agenda comments, items, anybody? Don't see any comments, okay. Next item is, nobody signed up for citizen concerns, so do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into executive discussion to discuss contractual matter involving the summer feeding, to receive legal advice regarding condemnation of project number zero zero four two three two five, tract forty-five B, and the Good Motor Company. Receive legal advice and to discuss, and to discuss a contractual matter regarding agritourism facility, and receive legal advice and discuss proposed mediated EEOC settlement and authorize the county attorney accordingly.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I'm sorry. The condemnation projects of tract forty-five B will not be discussed. I just wanted to clarify that, that will be continued to a later date. My apologies for not noting that.
Now with the amendment, do we, do we have a second?
A second.
We got a second? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll start back at seven. So we just came out of executive session, I believe there's one action item?
Yes, sir, I move that we authorize the county attorney to, to pursue the mediated EEOC settlement agreement.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
I voted aye, I apologize.
Okay, so I.
Four to three.
Well, who was the third?
Me.
Who'd you vote?
No, I voted aye.
Oh, oh, I thought you said.
Two, two, two no's.
I have a two.
I apologize.
Okay.
I'm doing my job to pay attention anyway, but I thought you said you voted no.
Move to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.